Hello.
Hello.
Hey, Robert.
Hey, Dana, how are you?
I'm good, except this laptop is really close to my face. Hold on. We're gonna try something a little different. Oops. See if that works.
Full meeting?
Well, hold on a sec. Now I can't see anything, because... Slightly better, right? Looks like Sherry's iPad is attempting to connect. Hey, Sherry?
On Sherry's iPad. Hi, Sherry. Make sure it's hand.
Sherry's iPad's in the meeting.
He's the main speaker. I'm logging into Zoom, right?
Pardon me?
Unless you wanna share your screen.
Well, just saying. A switching seats.
Yeah.
For you to...
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Gotta decide. I have to find the... What's the correct distance?
I don't know. I just woke up, so I'm not even sure.
Yeah, your name is Sherry's iPad.
That works.
Wasn't it tough? It's all worth, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, as witnessed by my last meeting.
Been that long, hasn't it? It's been a while since you've been here.
Yeah.
We didn't have a meeting last time, did we?
Last time, did we?
I don't...
The weeks ago? Because there was graduation stuff.
Last week, right? Wait, I guess it wasn't on...
It was.
Yes.
Time flies when you're stuck at home not doing anything fun, huh?
Yep.
Hey, Marshall, long time no see.
What's happening?
And there you are. You're right, you're right there.
Right where?
Right there.
I know where I am, but what do I do?
Nothing, just you'll be in the meeting. You're in the meeting.
Okay, well, I've got eight minutes, so I'm gonna put it... Well, maybe...
No, you have three minutes. You have three minutes.
You're my favorite person, Dr. Panegis.
Hi, everybody.
Hey, Dr. Woodstock.
Yeah.
Hopefully, you give that Carol Panegis a hug every single day, because she's one amazing lady.
Thank you.
I know it. I know more than anybody, but yeah. She's my technological advisor.
Well, she's more than that. She's super exceptional in many ways.
Yeah, yeah. She does everything. So...
Hey, Robert, tomorrow morning for our Facebook Live. I'll be wearing a tie again, so I'm just trying to meet your standards. Perfect. I'm gonna come t-shirt. No, I'll go and dress up for you. We're doing the awards tomorrow.
And then what does that mean?
They can...
Awards now?
Here they are. And then when you wanna talk, unclick. You just have to touch the bottom of your screen.
No, to hear me now, though, of all...
Today, you need a tie. My gram?
She might explain to me what's going on.
Why did you need a tie today? Because Carl said he was gonna wear a tie, and I just wanted to meet his standards. Fair enough.
Okay, I want everybody to know that this may cut out. We are in the basement. We're having this total revamp of the house, and they're power spraying as we speak. So if you hear lots of power spraying...
Yeah, unmute, Tina.
I will mute it. I may mute it, and so that you can hear me, or anyway. It's...
You get Tina unmuted?
Carol just told me how to mute it.
No, no, but Tina needs to be unmuted.
Well, everybody can hear me now.
Yeah. Director Veitch needs to be unmuted. There we go.
Thank you. I muted myself to tell my husband something, and then I couldn't unmute myself. And I couldn't tell anyone to unmute me.
Sorry, I'll keep an eye on that. This is Dan.
Well, I may try to keep...
I think if you mute yourself, you might not be able to unmute. I haven't tested that, so I'll keep an eye.
I just tested it for you.
Just wave your arms.
All right, it's 5:30. I'd like to call the public hearing for the 2019-2020 Journal Fund Budget Extension to Order. Is Marshall going to... Marshall, are you going to first up talk us through everything? Looks like you're muted.
I'm on... Josh has his big speaker in here, so I'm time viewing through my screen, and I'm talking through Josh's big speaker, so they don't have any feedback in here. You guys doing okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so the budget extension's pretty much just a formality. We budgeted very conservatively for enrollment. We budgeted very conservatively for safety net this year. And our enrollment came in over 90%. FTE higher than we budgeted, which required us to hire a bunch of teachers. The school had already started. And we're gonna... We budgeted for about $500,000 in safety net. Looks like we're asking for 1.3 million, which we'll find out about tomorrow. So, but we had to spend all that money before we could ask for safety net. So that's why we're doing a budget extension. The revenue, the extra revenue we expect to have matches up with the extra expenditures we're asking to be able to spend.
So we... I'll start off with questions, boring, then open up if anyone. So we spent 1.3 in special ed, and we're asking for 1.3? Marshall?
We spent... So we spent a portion of the... We're raising our budget by 1.25 million dollars. We spent part of that in special ed. We spent part of that in basic ed, because when we got 90 extra kids, we had to hire a bunch of grade school teachers to meet the K3 compliance numbers and to have class sizes that were reasonable. So a portion of that is going towards special ed costs, and a portion of that's going towards basic ed costs primarily at the grade school level.
Okay. Board, any questions? So when will we hear back? When do we expect to hear back? How much do we get?
Sometime midday-ish tomorrow.
Okay.
Sarah can speak.
Are you gonna let her know?
You're muted, Sarah.
Thank you, Dan. I just wanted to let you know, yes, we'll hear tomorrow, probably before noon, because they do it in alphabetical order. We did notify the Safety Net Committee earlier this week of some things that we were not able to spend due to COVID closures. Application is about 1.25 million now. And we do think we're probably solid on close to 1.2 million of that.
And remind me, Marshall, how much is included in our budget?
About $500,000.
And will you let us know as soon as we find out?
Yes, I bet we will.
Can I come sit in the office next to you?
Exactly.
How do they release that information? Is it on a call? Is it online, or...
It's a hearing. It's a public hearing. If you can watch it if you like, I can send you the link, but it's a public hearing alphabetically through the whole state. So you just wait till you get to the G's, and ultimately, they'll tell us what we got and where they altered the application.
Okay. I would very much like to, if you don't mind, send me that link. I'd very much like to get that.
Hey, can I send it to Josh and have it send it out? Is that okay, Josh?
No.
Okay.
Does anyone else... I see Director Veitch nodding her head. Does anyone else want a link?
Yes, please. Yeah.
Okay. I'll get it to you.
Do we have any... I think I saw an email that we didn't have any public comment. Is that the case? Dr. Milton?
That is correct. Yeah. No comments or questions.
And it's really just a formality to have this. We can only spend what our revenue allows. We can only spend what we requested at the beginning of the year. And once we had higher enrollment than we projected, we probably knew we were gonna be in this boat this year to do a budget extension. But I wanted to wait as long as possible just to make sure where we're gonna end the year.
And it looks like, and I know you'll talk about this more, but you're forecasting an increase to 2094? Next year?
Yeah, that's super conservative. We just rolled grade forward. We did not add any kids to any grade, and we reduced kindergarten by, I think, 30 or 40 kids. That's kind of our conservative way, but we think kindergarten's probably gonna come in higher than that, but we'll... Good chance we'll be in the same boat as we were this year and have to do some late hiring, but it's better than... It's better than not having the students and having too many teachers. It's better to have to hire a little late.
Do we have any idea from the state when we're gonna find out what kind of funding we're gonna get for next year? Like, how our funding's gonna be altered?
So, right now, we're kind of operating under the guidelines that about 96.5% of what we are funded is guaranteed constitutionally, and the state cannot pull back on that. Some things that they've talked about pulling back on is the IPD, which is the cost of living increase. They think there's gray area there whether or not the state has to provide that in order to satisfy the constitutional responsibility to fund basic ed. There are some talk about some state grants being pulled back. We haven't seen any of that yet. There's a thing called... There's a levy assistance for districts that ask for less levy. So the state guarantees $1,500 per student as far as levy revenue. If for whatever reason a student is getting less than that, or a district getting less than that $1,500 per student, pull back, fill up to the $1,500. We don't meet that criteria. We get all of that revenue from our levies. That doesn't impact us, but it is. That's a $200 million amount for the state of Washington, so it impacts a lot of districts, but just not us. So we pay for funding, but I mean, the worry would be if, for some reason, our enrollment took some crazy drop.
Carl, am I allowed to ask the question that I asked you, or do I have to wait for the regular meeting for that?
Wait for the regular meeting. We have to...
Marshall, incoming question at the regular meeting.
Yeah, I'll be ready.
All right. It's probably not as hard as it... Like, as I'm trying to wrap my head around it. It's not too sideways or anything, but I just wanted to make sure I was doing it right.
So just back to the state budget, it's... You know, we're lucky being in a school district that we have this constitutionally guaranteed funding level. The pension fund is also guaranteed. Combined, that's probably 45% of the state's budget. So they're gonna have to fix whatever budget shortfall they have using that other 55% of the state's budget. So it's gonna hit some areas really, really, really hard.
Probably transportation or something like that, maybe?
Local government agencies, probably.
If it impacts local government, does that mean that we would be impacted as far as, like, local tax collection or whatever?
Probably... Well, I mean, there could be a greater default on tax payments. They were given... This year, they were given like an extension to pay their taxes until sometime in June. And that...
Right.
We were short about $600,000 in general fund tax revenue.
I paid mine.
Thank you.
June 1st. Make sure I got it in there.
Thank you.
So, yeah, but... But as far as, like, if they short fund, or if they pull back funding to the local government, the local government will then come back around the backside and pull back funding from us that way?
We really don't... We really don't get any local funding from, you know, our...
Just the property tax.
Our levy is protected, so that money has to come to us. It's kind of an agreement between the voters and the county is that this money is going to the school district. So they can't take that. There could be some weird thing with transportation this year. You know, there could be a lot less kids that wanna ride a bus, so that could reduce our transportation funding, because that's based on three ridership counts throughout the year. Right now, the state is allocating us really about the same as last year. But if, you know, if they take the three counts and a ridership is significantly down, that could be reduced. And that's, I mean, it's always a worry.
So is there, like, one bus that goes to that new development, just to that development and then back?
I believe there's a bus that just... That it's part of the route. You talk about Suncrest Farms?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe it's part of a route, and so they have a grade school route, and then they drop off the grade school kids, and they come back for a middle school or vice versa. They do the high school, middle school route first, and then go back out and get the grade school route. So they hit that neighborhood twice. Our buses are pretty full. I mean, we have a lot of kids that ride buses here. It's probably... When I looked a couple of years ago, it was somewhere around 70% of our students get here via a bus.
Wow. My kids end up taking a very long ride to get home, but it's a full bus until they get to the father's house, and then probably 80% of the bus gets off there. And then... And then they take a tour of Lake Bosworth before they get to my house. They end up going just to the homeless and back before they get here, but anyway.
Any other questions about the Budget Extension Board? We have to send this public meeting till 6:00, because that's what it was advertised, so. Related specifically to the budget hearing, any other questions or anything for Marshall?
We wanna talk about having... I mean, I guess since it's... Since we're here, we're killing time. Do you wanna talk at all about having a study session?
Let's do that in the regular meeting. We're supposed to only talk about what's advertised in the actual meetings.
So what do we do for the remaining 18 minutes?
We can stare at each other. Although, the nice thing is, here's my board packet, and here's me looking at all of you guys, so.
Oh, is this meeting adjourned, and we have 10 or 15 minutes to...
No, we can adjourn it until 6:00. We advertise 5:30 to 6:00.
Okay.
Or actually, wait. I'm looking at the thing.
I think you could probably mute and close video. And then just, when it gets to be close to 6:00, just turn on video and audio again, and we'll be set to go.
Dan, if we mute, can we unmute? Or will we be stuck?
Yeah, I'll be watching, so, you know, at 6:00 o'clock, I'll make sure we're all unmuted again and ready to roll.
Okay.
All right, so let me... Unless there's any other questions, I can give a formal close to the public extension meeting. Is there any other questions? Okay, so I will close the public hearing at 5:44 PM. And we will re-adjourn the regular meeting starting at 6:00. Hey, Deon, go ahead and mute and stop your video until 6:00. Okay? Great. Dr. M, real quick, are we gonna do that race?
We are.
Yeah. Tomorrow, we'll talk those details. All right, cool. Yeah.
Okay. 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 Okay.
I can't hear anything.
Carl, did we lose your audio?
And.
Sometimes Carl has to call in again separately. Okay. 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 So Carl just texted and said that he is trying to get back in. He's gonna at least try to audio connect.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Good, I can hear you now. That was weird. I couldn't hear you.
Carl's back.
There we are. That was the weirdest thing in the world I was staring at. I was like Director Butler, comments and why aren't you talking? I realized everybody's frozen. So Director Butler, four comments, do you have any?
Uh, Mr. Chair, before we get to the board comments, could we adjust the agenda?
Absolutely. What would you like?
I, I would like to ask the removal of three A and five D from the agenda. And that has to do with our school improvement plans. I was under the, uh, my own impression that we had a due date of having them be approved by May or June, but actually that's not the case. And there's some work that we still want to do on those. And so now that uh we'll be able to, we're in phase two and bring in some groups. Um, we'd like to bring this back to the board in uh most likely August and uh just that'll give us some time to have some, I, I think a better product for you to consider.
Okay, is there a, a motion from the board to remove items three A and five D related to the school improvement plan from the agenda?
I'll make the motion to remove items three A and five D from the agenda.
Okay, motion's been made to remove items three A and five D from the agenda, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, I, I think I saw Director Green, I think that was who I heard. Most of the main seconded by Director Green, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Thank you for the explanation, Dr. Milton. On board comments, Director Butler.
All right, uh, so I wanted to say, uh, first off that, uh, I'm proud of the work everyone's put in to get us this far. We're almost, uh, done for the year and one of the most trialing times I've ever seen in education, so I really am proud of all the effort everyone's put in. I want to say thank you hopefully for that and uh I think that's really all I have to say.
Yeah. Director Veach, are you okay going next?
Sure, I just, I just would like to, back in Director Butler's and just, uh, Director Butler and just thank the staff and the students and all involved for the extra patience and effort that the last three months has taken across the board. And we recognize the effort and uh just wanted to publicly thank each person, um, as we're winding down the school year. We've, we've made it, you know, and uh and congratulations and thank you to all.
Thanks, Director Veach. Doctor Director Panegas, do you have anything?
Yes, I totally empathize with how difficult these past few months have been and uh all of the commencement part of it. But I did want to, and this is my own perception and viewpoint and probably my own lack of knowing everything I should have known. I know Josh has sent us emails and uh tried to keep us on what was happening. But I am confused and hopefully my questions will be answered. My overall perception is that the board really did not, I feel guilty as a board member, we did not participate as fully as I thought we would. And I'm, I'm big on transparency and I know Josh has been that's been a main goal of his throughout the year. But I have questions about what happened last week. Uh, people notified me that there was uh ceremonies on Friday and I was told, you know, there weren't and the board membership could stay away from that. I have a long history with Jostens as an administrator for years and years. They're a very successful company uh with uh, you know, rings and uh commencement. And this thing that happened, uh, I know we were told it was going to happen, the decision on how to do it. I just a lot of questions, did, did every district take advantage of the Jostens uh option? Uh, and then when it went from our dog, but and the uh the idea of uh the participation, did all districts do that? Uh, but also I'm was concerned about the uh just a second, dog, screw me, um. Anyway, was, did everybody, am I the only one that felt like we were? And then uh I heard from uh parents, some parents that were concerned about the way things happened. I don't know if there really was a ceremony that we should have been at. Like, we were told to stay away and we stayed away. I did, uh, but I just feel like I wasn't as informed or I didn't understand as much as I should, could have. I did do the uh minute long, I was just over a minute on talking to the seniors. Tried to make that work so important as not to do it. I guess we're gonna be able to see the, some of the video after Friday. But so I just want to share my, my frustration and maybe the question can be answered. But I do think it pays off, my final thought is it does pay for us to either at the board retreat or somehow revisit and reflect on how this whole thing was handled. It was a, a next impossible job. Everybody worked really hard, but I don't have a great feeling uh about the whole thing. And maybe uh, you know, I, I was just not knowing enough on my part, so uh I'm, I'm just a little bit frustrated with it. And uh I think we will always want to try to improve. Hopefully this will never happen again, chances are it won't. But what would we do differently if it came around again? Thank you.
Dr. Milton, if it's okay, I'll, I'll, since we're in board comments, if you, if you want to give any feedback to that, I'll let you do it in the superintendent report. Is that okay?
I, I was going to address graduation in my report.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Panegas. Director Green?
No comment at this time.
Thank you, sir. All right, um, I want to um also thank uh everyone for a, a long, really trying year. Um, I appreciate um all of the hard work, um, especially with so many things up in the air. And uh I'm, I'm definitely looking forward to hopefully a year as the, the state superintendent says, um, where he anticipates next year that we'll be able to have in-person um education again. Just wanted to put in a plug for the survey that Melanie uh and at the board, or I'm sorry, that the admin team put out about next year and then the potential options there. Uh, any parents or students or, or stakeholders in our community, certainly encourage you to reach out on that um and provide some feedback as we're looking at the options within the framework that's being provided by the state on, you know, what specific classroom education looks like here in the Granite Falls School District. I'm thankful that we have some options to craft a, a program that, that we think is gonna work best for us. Also, I wanted to, to, to say, um, it's been a couple of weeks now, but um, I don't, I didn't address in my last board comments, but I, I want to say I, I participated in the, um, the local protest march here in Granite. That was organized by students um here in the, the Granite Falls School District. And there was a, I, I saw the school board members, their teachers, um, principals. It was a really good tenant protest. I, it was, it was very civil, very peaceful. Um, but most of all, I was just really impressed by kids that are products of our school district that were able to speak um and organize something that was, um, that had so many moving parts and speak so passionately about the things that they're, that they're passionate about. And I was just, I was just really impressed that kids are taking up the mantle to be um social community changers. So I, I just wanted to, to say a huge thanks to the, the team of students that did that. Let's see, we don't have Brady. So that was all the comments that we have there, okay? Moving on to now new item three B. Um, CTE report, and that's prepared by Kevin Davis. So do we have any questions on the CTE report board?
I have just a few, if. Oh, there you are. Maybe we should unmute, there you are, now you're unmuted. But I, could I go first?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin, for your um CTE report. I just, um, I had a couple of questions when I was reading over this. It mentions that there's eleven dual credit courses that are being offered to the students. And when I looked at the second page, it kind of, or yeah, second page, I think it is. It kind of looks like that's gonna be five classes at the high school, is that correct? Am I, am I understanding that correctly? For this year?
So what we had this year, we had the opportunity that we had Bellevue, which is a PN W C C group, we called it the Bellevue Group, uh, offer us uh dual credit opportunities and that's reflected in the third page.
Third page, okay.
List that we were trying to show. And, and we also offered some E B C C classes that matched up that we couldn't get at Bellevue initially. And that was, we want to make sure they help match us up at Crossroads especially. But some of them will also match to the high school. So that's where I think we get a couple of extra ones towards that eleven. And, and I'll be honest, I can't, you know, it's been a while since I looked at this, but um yeah, so you'll see like business is just basically was a C, uh, I mean a crossroads class where he's computers and we did have some overlap like an uh career or not career, but core ones and core twos. We were able to get that both, so we didn't list that also with the P N M with the Bellevue Group. We just kept it with the uh E B C Group. Did that answer your question?
I kind of think so, I'm sort of confused. I guess when I was looking at this, it looked like maybe we have five credits for financial fitness with Sullivan at, from Bellevue. But um only three credits from E B C C. Or are those separate classes that are somehow offered? Like, I'm trying to understand why the same class is only getting three, three credits at one school and five at the other.
Right, so uh Everett only would grant, the reason we like the Bellevue Group is because we can get a little bit more and we can offer more classes. So that's why we got, Bellevue gave us five class or five credits from, actually, I think it was Bellevue Community College. And E B C would only grant us three credits.
Okay, and we don't have any offerings yet from Skagit or Edmonds, but that's kind of on the radar for next year, maybe?
Correct, I mean, it's always on the radar, that we're always checking. One small step for mankind and I want to get the Bellevue Group up and going well. And so the, you know, we have a better chance and um so, but we're always looking to explore. And, and Skagit has just brought their program back. You know, last year, I believe, they were gonna do away with it. So again, yes, we're always exploring for more classes.
Okay, so as I, now you mentioned in here, um, the increased availability of CTE at Crossroads. But I couldn't tell, I guess I couldn't tell in here. I guess I couldn't tell in here what those offerings at Crossroads are. Are, are all these same classes offered at both high schools?
Yes, I mean, as far as dual credit or just, when we said that, we, we've offered more just regular CTE credit at Crossroads this year, because again, we're working towards getting that CTE pathway for graduation and giving more offerings through there. So Crossroads is, is a little bit interesting, because we don't give it, it's not, we don't get funding for it, so it's not like a state CT class, but we approve the CTE credits through the state so that it'll match the, for the career pathways and graduation pathways. And the reason we don't go after the enhancement dollars through CTE for Crossroads is because the ALE dollars are better. And, and we get more money from the ALE and we can't claim both. Although in, if, right this year in the legislature, they were having those conversations and wanting to, to make some adjustments with the ALEs and the CTE funding.
Okay, I guess, I guess, I guess I just wanted to make sure that the students, you know, were best represented, because I couldn't tell from the paperwork which ones were at both schools or, or not.
And I, what you're, and I know this is just to tag on, I, I know this, what you're, you're heading towards Director Veach, because we spoke about it. And I know that the school improvement plan was removed, but there, there's a sentence in there, or a couple of sentences, I guess, raised an eyebrow for, for both of us in the SIP from Crossroads, it says, Granite Falls School District shifted from a dual credit partnership with EBCC to a consortium of providers that have not approved our dual credit options. The shift led to a lack of knowledge about which courses were eligible for dual credit options, therefore dual credit was not offered.
It led me to think that, that, that there was dual credit, that we did something that, that caused Crossroads students to no longer be eligible for that dual credit. But students at the Granite Falls High School were somehow eligible for the same credit. So I don't know if, if you have those answers, I guess I was just trying to make sure that our students are being, having equal, you know, representation, equal opportunity or access to those credits, right?
Right, so, so what happened was, we, we joined the venture with the, the PNWCC Pacific Northwest Consortium. They were a little bit slow to, we asked for both Crossroad classes of dual credit and high school classes. And we turned the frameworks into them in the, in the fall, and they were very slow to get it up and going. And as we rolled into that, gosh, it seemed like November, December timeframe, you know, we were pushing them and they weren't really getting back to us in a quick manner. So that, at that point, we opened up our dialogue with Everett Community College and said, hey, listen, we'd like to get some credits with you guys, because we want dual credit and we want to make sure that's available both at Crossroads and at the high school. And so Everett Community College communicated back, and that's why you see the Everett Community College classes. And about the time Everett talked to us, then Pacific Northwest Group got back to us and said, hey, we've got these class, these classes approved. So a financial fitness class that we have at the high school under Bellevue is also available for Crossroad kids for the same thing, because it's the same framework, it's the same piece that we turned in. So they were, they took longer to get going. And in fact, it wasn't until even during the, in March, late March, I want to say, that we, we did a training to how to register those kids and get them involved in the class. So the high school probably had, you know, maybe we had more dual credit courses offered than we had in the past. And Crossroads had all the dual credit they had in the previous time from Everett Community College, because we got those on late. And we got a couple of the Bellevue Community Colleges also approved the same classes for them. And so we did have more, but it came in late, like in the, you know, that January timeframe, which for the colleges was fine. But for us, that feels like second semester and then, then, but yes, Crossroads had the opportunity for dual credit. COVID-19 hits, right? And, and so those opportunities weren't necessarily fully realized. Does that make sense? So I, I can certainly understand what was in their plan for it. But when we initially started this project, Crossroads, we want to make sure they get as many dual credit opportunities as a high school or that they have classes for. And so we worked for both of them. They were just late come.
So just piggybacking on that question, in the instructional materials, it said that we got $265,000 dedicated to the school district and $125,000 to the high school and then $35,000 for computers at the high school, $105,000 for the middle school. And it said, because of COVID-19, not all the plans for those funds has happened. Does that mean the things have not been purchased or that the funding dried up because of COVID-19?
What that is referencing is that things, we had to get things purchased into our building in, in specific timeframe. And because of the businesses shutting down and other things that COVID-19 impacted, we weren't able to get everything that we, we wanted to get at the top.
So the funding is still available, we just haven't, we haven't used it yet?
Right, and so I've also, you know, and Marshall can speak more to this, but I've been in conversations with Marshall and what we don't spend, and, and we know exactly how much we haven't spent now today.
Yeah, yeah.
Because where we're at, and which was after the report, we're, we think we can get that as carryover. And so that, that, those funds will be available for us to spend on items for next year. And we've identified some items already to be spent on. For example, we were going to get a CNC machine down at the middle school. You know, in the timeframe that we have and, and to get it done, it just wasn't going to get, it wasn't going to arrive in the district in a timely fashion. So let's put that off and get that with carryover for next year.
Right, okay. So then, forgive my ignorance, does this mean, I don't see Crossroads has funding in there? Is that because Crossroads uses the middle school building for their, for their CTE? I don't see, like, it's not called out that they're getting any of this funding.
Right, and they wouldn't, because the money that this funding generates is from specifically the high school CT classes or the middle school CTE classes. And like I said earlier,
Oh, because the ALE money, I got you.
Right, so she gets it on that.
I get it, yes, I just wanted to make sure that, and I guess lastly, the 25 online seats, I've heard that there aren't 25 kids in the manufacturing program, is that, is that two separate things?
Well, we purchased 25 because between all these classes, you know, between this core one and this core two and this core, there were 25 kids total.
I got you.
So, you know, and so we wanted to make sure we had one for every student, now if every student didn't take advantage of it because of whatever the reason is. But we wanted to make sure that we had done something.
Okay. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, but the other thing I just want to point out about for funding and, and we purchased, we, I wrote a grant and we were, ordered the grant, and we purchased precision exams for the district, which was Crossroads and the high school. And what that helps us for is our industry recognized certificate. So we can utilize those to help meet that requirement for the graduation pathway classes, both at Crossroads and at the high school. And when we went out in February, I want to say, that's when we had the training. So we have this also purchase for next year, we got a year and a half subscription for a one-year price. So we're hoping to get into that, and something Crossroads can use to make sure that their students, because you have to have a course as industry recognized certificate as part of, you know, some qualifications. And so we've got that also. And whether we stay with precision exams or not in the future, we're waiting to see if we, we like it or not.
Okay, thank you.
I just have, so I, I just have one tag to that, so is there, Kevin, is there, is Crossroads, do you, are they aware of the dual credit options that they have? Because I'm, I'm just, I'm not trying to, to beat a dead horse, but it just seems like there, there may be a disconnect in what's offering, because we're saying that they have more options, they're saying they didn't offer anything due to a misunderstanding. Do we need to go back and kind of update them on what offerings are, are available, do you think?
Well, I'd be happy to, to, to get with Bridget and make sure that she's aware of what we had offered for it. At the time, we did send, you know, email contact down to her and we also did put in contact to say, you know, you need to connect with this person at Everett Community College so they can, you know, work with your teacher to set up so they can have an opportunity. And we, I know Bridget was in on the phone call and her teachers were when we had the training from the Pacific Northwest Company. But, you know, instead of trying to figure it out, let me go back and make sure that she knows that she has, and the ship may have sailed for this year, but these are the same things we should have for next year. So I'll make sure that she's aware of it right away that we have these dual credit options.
That's completely reasonable answer, Kevin, I was just asking if we, if you thought you needed to circle back or thought it was wise to circle back, but.
Yeah, I'll circle back with you.
Any other questions, board?
Yes, I, I understand, try to figure this out, I understand that the ALE dollars are better than CTE. But doesn't the ALE offer more funding per student in vocational classes?
I'm not as familiar with ALE, I think they do, but I'm not familiar with their funding, so I would just be guessing as far as that side goes. But what has been explained to me, you know, Bridget's explained it to me, is that, you know, ALE funding is better for them than the enhancement that they would get from the state CT dollars. So that's why we don't, you know, we didn't, we don't claim their students for the CTE enhancement dollars. They get, they claim those students on the ALE side and get, and get more money for them. That's the way it's been explained to me, so sorry, I couldn't answer.
Do you want, Director Panagis, is it okay if maybe he follows up in an email or something with that feedback? It's, it's reasonable, he doesn't have that information right now.
I understand, now that would be great.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll follow back up with an email to you.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
We're catching you off guard, I get that. Any other questions related to the CTE report? Okay, hearing none, appreciate you, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item 3C, Business Report, that's also prepared by Marshall Cruz. I will open it up to questions. Director Veach, I know you were hot.
Yeah, I, sorry, I saw Director Green's square go yellow, so I didn't know if he was going to say something. Let's see, some of this. Oh, so I was looking at the report and I had a couple of questions, Marshall, when I looked at the expenditures and it's just really my not understanding, so I just, are you muted, can you hear me? Oh, good, you're still on the, the other speaker. So as I looked at the expenditures, and I don't know how to call these out the right way, I guess, maybe the big one was, I'm looking at line 20, which is the special ed instruction, the vocational ed instruction and then support services, especially support services, we're sort of, we're trending around $600,000 a month-ish. And then in April, we're at $935,000, did we just have a large expense? I mean, it's nearly a million dollars, so it, it caught my eye.
That is one area of our spending that we have a little bit of control of how quickly we want to pay it. So we're holding off paying some things until we got our $70,000 from our tax revenue.
So that does sort of even out where, when you see the $347,000 the month before and then it went up to $930,000. So it's kind of averaging that 600. Is that similar, would the answer be similar for special education instruction on line 20 and vocational ed instruction?
Vocational ed should be fairly flat, it should be fairly even, most of that is salaries. There's some expenditures in there, but most of that should be salaries. Especially, we had to catch up on some, I can't remember what it was, E cap, I think they, our E cap was a lot bigger than we thought it was going to be. And we were receiving the revenue for it, but we weren't receiving the bills yet, so we had to catch up on the bills.
I see, yeah, because I noticed we're at 124% of the, you know, the budgeted amounts. And our enrollment, it said for special education, I guess, the, we estimated 20 students between zero, zero and two, and then we ended up with 41, I think is the number, so that's more than double what we thought we would have.
Yeah, that, that area has been exploding here, and I think we see that trend continuing.
Do you think that's tied to the new housing development? Just be, why there would be so many zero to two, or did we start a new program or, I don't know, just trying to figure it out.
I haven't, I haven't dug into where these, or where, where these families are coming from. Something we could do.
So then I guess, similar question, maybe this is the answer tied to property taxes, for the buildings, for the capital projects. We were like at $1,000 to $3,000 per month and then we are at $35,000 in April, $35,000 for buildings, did something?
We're just spending as things come in, we're not holding.
Okay.
I, I'd have to look to see what that exactly was, but we're, we're spending, capital projects budget, we're spending as bills happen.
Okay. All right, I think those are most of my questions. That's basically, it makes sense now that I hear that it had to do with the, the timing of the property tax, you know, revenue.
That's, that's the one category, we have a little discretion on when we pay things. So we're trying to balance a really budget.
Okay, thank you.
Board, any other questions? I know, I, I have one, so Marshall, right now as we sit, we're about 67% to budget on revenue. But we're, we're right at like 100% as far as expenditures go. On the revenue, you, you still feel confident that we'll, I mean, I'm, I'm not including, I know safety net is a part of that.
Part of the disconnect between revenue expenditures is they allow families to defer their property taxes into, into June. So we have about $500,000 back in April that we haven't, we hadn't received as of. So we'll, we will receive that in June and then also the way our, the way our revenue comes in, it's highly, it's heavily weighted for the last three months of the year. So I, I, looking at where we are, I think we'll be, I'm, I'm, I'm sure we'll be fine.
Okay. Have we done any of the planned expenses or upgrades to, I'm, I'm assuming the answer is no, but I'm just asking the question anyway. Have we done any of the building upgrades or anything that we had talked about related to, you know, the portables and stuff like that, getting them prepared for this expected inrush of students next year?
I actually received a call from the food bank on Tuesday, and I haven't called them back yet, but they're asking about where we'd like the portables, the food bank portables moved to. So I think that's moving forward to get the food bank portables here. We have not done anything yet on that, part of the reason is you have certainty of what next year is going to look like. There is pretty strong momentum to try and give a one-year waiver on the K3 compliance numbers. So that would allow us to increase our class size just a little bit at K3, at K3, and then maybe not need the additional space, maybe push the need for additional space out by one year. We're hoping to hear about that sooner than later, but there is definitely a lot of momentum from school districts, ESEs, even OSPI, about trying to get a one-year waiver on the K3 class compliance. So we would still be paid at the 17:1 ratio, but wouldn't have to staff at that for K33.
That's the first time I'm, maybe I was out of the loop. That's the first time I've heard that, that there was a work for, for that. Is that going to come before the board, before we do that? Or I guess, because, I mean, and I'm hearing this for the first time, but you know, I, I have concerns, even though we might be allowed to do something, doesn't necessarily mean that we should. And I mean, because, I mean, there's, there's a ton of debate in the educational world, which, you know, what will have the best outcomes for kids? But it's, in everything I've been in, the, the one thing that seems like everybody agrees in is that lower class sizes have better outcomes for kids, especially in the primary age group. So I would be, that's something that we want to make sure that we, if, if we want to go down that route, that we thoughtfully do. And, you know, and in a way that, you know, I, I don't, where we do it only because it seems like we're going to be able to maintain those positive outcomes for kids. If we feel like it's not, then I would have a lot of apprehension, obviously talking, speaking for myself.
Well, also consider that we have to have social distancing next year, and it's harder to do with larger class sizes. So I mean, that aspect where it doesn't, might not work, so.
But I, I haven't seen Josh's superintendent report yet, but I, he, this is something, you know, it's, it's going to be, there's going to be a committee on how we open. There's going to be, the school board is going to adopt a policy resolution for what school will look like next year. So I don't know if that's going to be talked about tonight, but the guidance that I think we were getting from the state is that best practice would be to have, you know, community involvement and board adoption of what it's going to look like.
Well, the, the whole reason I bring up the maintenance thing and the stuff like that, and, and, you know, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I know I do. I mean, we are, we're not in the best place financially, right? We've got things, building-wise, deferred maintenance, things that we need to do to be able to prepare, maintenance that we're deferring to be able to prepare for, you know, the students that we're going to come in where we're just, you know. I, I know, Josh, we've talked about a million times, and you're doing a good, you know, maintaining culture for your first year. And I, I guess I'm just repeating that, that we need to be as fiscally conservative as we possibly can. Especially, I mean, hopefully tomorrow we have some good outcomes with safety net and stuff like that. But, you know, it's, it's not a rosy picture right now. And hopefully I'll feel a lot better when we get that million and a half from safety net. But, you know, it's, it's just something that we need to keep our eye on. But also we need to be, you know, we need to keep students first. And I know you're doing this, Marshall. I'm, I'm not saying that you're not, but we can keep students first. And that's, you know, with those lower class sizes and all the other things. And, you know, trying to, to keep, you know, building maintenance at a level of where it is. You know, there's obviously a lot of balls in the air, but it's just important that we keep sight of all of them.
Right.
Oh, anything else, Board? On the fiscal operations or the enrollment projections?
Call out the enrollment projections are, my kind of thought process around that was just roll everybody grade forward and come in super conservative on kindergarten. And that push in if enrollment should, if, if we should lose a few kids at each grade level. I, I think the enrollment projection is pretty conservative, but we're going to, on top of that conservative enrollment projection, we're going to be doing aggressive staffing projections in the budget, but leaving the flexibility, hire those staff, that staffing later in the year to keep that flexibility. We won't really start seeing what our enrollment reality is until probably mid-August.
So are we approving this projection? Because my understanding, Dr. Milton, is we're going to have a board study session and review the budget before it kind of comes before us. I mean, and that's the point when we start approving budget projections, isn't, is that correct?
Yeah, we're not, we're not approving anything like that tonight, no.
Informational right now.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear, make sure. So 2094, and we were at an average of 2059 this year, right?
Right.
On a budget of 1968. And you said, you said you weren't adding any students in any classes? Or you said something earlier that, that I guess Race and Ibra didn't fully understand. You said that was a budget and without adding students or something along those lines?
We rolled every grade, every student forward a grade like they will, they'll move forward a grade. And then we went super conservative with kindergarten.
Okay. Okay, yeah, that was it. And you thought kindergarten was going to come in higher. I get it. I remember that. Okay. Sorry to make you go back through that.
That's okay.
Is there, I didn't see, is there an operations report in here? I, or I see operations is included.
I think we just labeled that every, every time, but it's more, it's usually just physical enrollment. But this was physical enrollment and enrollment projection.
Is there anything operational-wise, since there's not a formal report in here, that you dealt with over the last couple of months or so?
I'm sorry, I lost you during a cough.
Oh, is there anything operational-wise that, that came up or anything that we need to be aware of or?
I, I guess just a call out to how well the packet distribution and food service is born. I'm just blown away and, and I've been doing very valuable. And I'm talking to each one of them individually and just telling them, honestly, it's one of the proudest things I've been a part of since I've been here is how quickly and how well we're distributing food to families. And we're doing it better than any of our members, and I think it's amazing.
I've, I've, I've heard really good feedback about it too. Okay. Any other questions, Board, before we move on to the next item? All right. Thank you, Marshall. Appreciate your time, sir.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 3D Superintendent Report presented by Dr. Milton.
Quite a bit to go over tonight, but I want to answer a couple of questions real fast on that reduced class size. That, no, we have not talked about this in this group because honestly, that has not been something that's been passed down to us by the state superintendent. I think that's just one of those areas that maybe is talked about, but we have not seen any sort of formal proposal like that. So we need to keep proceeding as if those class sizes are in place, those reduced class sizes. So to me, we're still planning ahead like that. And then the second item was, we continue to be in a hiring freeze except for those essential positions. And I know our principals are dying to hire because they're basing it on some numbers. But until we get parent survey back indicating their level of comfort and we get a better sense of the direction of what school's going to look like, we're going to hold fast to, again, just really looking at the, the essentials. And so for example, for a district our size, we need two school psychologists. And so we've had one posted forever, and we've had one school psychologist who has done an incredible job this year. And then we've done some distance psychology work, and we cannot do that ever again. We have always have, we always have to have two psychologists. So if it's an essential position like that, we're hiring. But other than that, we're, we're waiting. And I, I can say, sitting on a Snohomish County Superintendent call every week, and the ESD call every week, everyone is staying pat right now. So until we get a little bit more information, I know it makes us all uncomfortable. But that's, that's just the approach. We all have to be conservative right now. Every, every superintendent on that call is worried about enrollment. So just wanted to address that real fast. So I, I want, I have a lengthy report tonight, so I'd like to go through it then afterwards. If there's some questions, we can, we can address that. But the first one, first point is there is a collective sigh after Friday, June 12th, and the graduation ceremonies were complete. You know, it was only the week before that we got out of Phase One. Phase One didn't allow anything in terms of graduation. I mean, except maybe driving by and seeing some encouraging words on, you know, posted somewhere. I mean, there were so many limitations. It wasn't until we got into Phase Two, and all along, we had been planning like Phase Two was going to arrive, but it was very last minute. And it was not perfect, and God forbid, wherever in this situation, a year from now, there are a number of things we would change, but it got done. And just a reminder, schools closed in March. At that time, the original thought, it would be for just a couple of weeks. And it wasn't until, you know, I think mid-April, we started talking about what if this goes on further and further? In my Snohomish County Superintendent Group, we started talking about Life and Light, the company that Dr. P, most of the school districts in our area use that company, Life and Light, which is, they were affiliated with Justin's and, and did something like us, similar to us. Really not too much variation. I, I have to thank Mr. Davis, Mr. Johnson, Ms. McVeigh, Mr. and Mrs. Freeman, and Dr. Manns. They were all on those calls with Life and Light, trying to make this, make this work. And of course, we did the, the survey, and there were numerous staff members who all serve underneath of them, who helped pull this off, all the while trying to listen to and appease our graduates and our parents to, you know, to get this to, to work. While in the moment, you feel like a juggler and you feel like, you know, seniors and their families, they're getting robbed of this lifetime experience, but you're trying to comply with regulations. And you're constantly reminding yourself, this is first and foremost the health crisis. Dr. P, early on, we had every intention to include board members with that diploma delivery. And Director Butler was, was really a, you know, a proponent of that. But even that, even the handing off of one thing to another in Phase Two was prohibited as, as, from the guidance that we received. So in no means did we want to include, exclude board members. Board members are so crucial at graduations. And it's, it's an off year. It's a awful feeling, honestly. My word of the week I've, I've expressed to my cabinet, it's, the word is angst. And there's just a lot of angst. I'm just, you know, ready. I, I apologize if, if I didn't close the loop on that. I, I feel like try, I try and over communicate on that, but I obviously I didn't do that for you, and, and my apologies. But I need to say that concurrently, while all this, all of this is going on, you have senior teachers and counselors and principals, students and parents navigating this new instructional platform, new grading policies, a demand by the state superintendent, and even from, from me, passing that down, that we need to get as many seniors across the stage in that do no harm expectation that was placed by the state. So I have to say, five days after seniors' final day, one finally realizes the pressure cooker that so much of our high school staff was under to, to just get this done. In the same vein, my second point that I want to share is that we, of course, we have K8, I should say pre-K 11, teachers and staff, students and parents, who after this Friday, day after tomorrow, will feel that same sense of relief that this school year is in the books. Now, the online and remote learning industry, those who do that for a living, it's sophisticated, they're successful companies, and their platforms can enroll a student in a matter of hours and get them engaged in lessons within a day. And that's after months and years of those companies developing and developing and investing in infrastructures. Districts across our state, and really across the country, were asked to do more. Were asked to, you know, put this model in place in a matter of days. And I can't overstate sufficiently that while our model certainly was not perfect, here's the analogy. I, we could get, put a group together and ask them to make a movie. And then our product is compared to a Steven Spielberg production. Granted, after three months of daily rehearsal and getting to know the video and the equipment and so forth, our production would get better, and it did. But the comparison to a professional is unrealistic. And, and that's where we're at. Our wheelhouse as educators is face-to-face education. And I've said that all year. We have great teachers and staff in an environment that they thrive in and building relationships. Again, face-to-face, for most of them, our Granite Falls teachers and staff rose to the challenge, first to deliver learning opportunities. And then remember, we went from learning opportunities, just to refresh and review. All of a sudden, there's a shift by the state and the expectation to go to providing new learning. That's a whole different ballgame right there. So Board of Directors, I can't give enough kudos to 85 to 90% of our teachers and staff who truly need their blood, sweat, and tears to adjust and deliver, reflect, learn, relearn, adjust again, and be there for our students and families by providing food, preparing lessons, providing tech support, preparing and delivering food, preparing lessons behind the scenes. Or just the number of staff behind the scenes doing this work. And yes, I do say 85 to 90% of our, our GFSD employees, I'd love to say 100%, but we're not there yet. There's a 15% who didn't show up to give their all, or show that compassion, or honestly, have the appreciation that as educators, we have jobs. I mean, we are so fortunate. There are so many who are struggling in our area because of loss of job. Now, that's my problem to deal with, that 15%. And trust me, in the days and weeks to come, I will. But the bottom line I want to share is 85% of our teachers and staff, they are exhausted after this year. And I did want to recognize them for rising to this occasion. Point number three, add to the midst of all this, and we're watching the protests in the state, country, and the world really demanding enough is enough. And in my graduation remarks on Friday, which will be aired beginning this coming Friday, I challenged our graduates, but really all of us, that we need to see these events as a catalyst for change. I've shared with you and some of you that my role these last few months was to create the best learning environment, teaching and working environment to get us through this year, especially these last two weeks leading up to the end of school. This does not mean I'm blind or deaf to the other national events. I did put some, some thoughts out that I shared with our students and parents and staff a couple of weeks ago. Thoughts I fully embrace, that I'm going to look upon and reflect on my own core beliefs and unconscious bias and be sure to impact my own circle of influence rather than casting stones at others. I understand for some that wasn't enough, but I, I make no apologies. That was enough for right then to get us down to the stretch to end of the school year. But I want to be clear right here. That's, excuse me just a second. I wanted to come out and say that, yes, the, just the words and policies of the Granite Falls School District stating that we're not going to discriminate, those aren't enough. Words are easy, but our actions need to say more. I don't want any student, employee, or patron to experience discrimination, racism, sexism, bullying, harassment. Our schools do need to be a safe zone, a skull, a culture providing equitable measures. And ours needs to be a learning environment for all students and employees to thrive, feel valued, and be engaged. I recognized that last fall, and our cabinet came together and began planning with some deliberate measures in our curriculum and arranging for events, and some events in March that dealt with equity and unconscious bias. Uh, that dealt with equity and unconscious bias, but obviously those got canceled due to COVID. So uh, again, we have work to do. I'm assembling a committee of stakeholders. They'll be meeting this summer so we can address the processes and opportunities that eliminate. Discrimination, discriminatory racist and sexist practices. I'm looking for those who want to be positive problem solvers. The stone throwers need not apply. I, I don't have the details right now, except when this Friday, the last day of school. It comes and goes, my focus can get realigned to the bigger picture and those few future tasks. Now, our future tasks not only include that committee, but my fourth point tonight, and that's reopening. We have sent out surveys to parents and staff to reflect on this spring. But more importantly, to get input on what next year can look like. Here's what we know right now from joint guidance from the Department of Health and OSPI. Superintendent Wright doll the other day, yesterday said. As a general statement, there's overall clearance for a full return to school. That can vary from county to county though, and town to town depending on health conditions. So schools are to be working closely with local departments of health. As we get closer to opening day, a plan does need to be. Brought to you, discussed by us and then submitted to the state. Whatever our schools look like in the fall, there's repeated urgency to have a contingency plan. To remove, to return to remote learning, should there be a spiked outbreak? That's, that's one of the clearest messages that, that he has given. To have students on site for instruction, the Department of Health has six basic guidelines. First, insist that students and staff who are sick, they stay home. The second. Heavy monitoring of uh hand hygiene. Third, physical distancing. Fourth, face coverings worn by all. Fifth cohort, creating cohorts and grouping so that there's not a lot of interchange among students. And then sixth, cleaning of buildings on a deeper, more regular basis. So those are, those will be the guidelines that will be evaluated to determine. What we can do and how soon we can do it. There of course is ensuring that all staff are trained in health and safety procedures. Providing employees with personal protective equipment, health screening upon arrival at, at the entry. Um, canceling and modifying classes likely to be in close contact, the state superintendent said. There's probably not room for choir in the coming year. Um, and there are some others, but I mean that, that was one that he brought up. Reducing large gatherings and number of students in hall, limit non-essential visitors to buildings. Go outside as much as possible for classes was weather permits, stagger meals. And this last one I'm going to share, you're just going to scratch your head as we are. Bus riding without the same expectations of social distancing will be allowed, but masks will be required. So for up to an hour a day, we'll have kids in a can. Driving very close together, but we can't, and social distancing expectations aren't, aren't enforced. And you're going to have one bus driver who's monitoring bus mask. So if I sound a little frustrated and overwhelmed, that would be fair. So options for twenty twenty-one is we bring everybody back. And we follow these guidelines that I just went over. That's the state superintendent's hope and goal. The second option, whether we have to default to it days later or months later. Or whether we start with this is alternating schedules. So you have half the students there for a certain amount of time. Half the other time, or maybe you have certain grades learning remotely. And you have other grades that are, that are onsite. There's also talk of a staggered start so that you might start with K eight. Using every single building, including the high school for social distancing and then as. This disease takes its permanent trend, um, you know, you bring people back. And then of course, the last one, which is a default if we have an outbreak or if a district decided to start with it. Is remote learning two point oh, which is what we did this spring only with. A heck of a lot more and greater expectations in uh student attendance. Expectations of student work and interactions with between students and, and teachers. So that's on the reopening and my last comment I'll just share for uh summer of twenty twenty. Obviously is going to be extremely busy, but I want to start by saying that. Friday, we stop our meal delivery as it has been for the last two and a half months. But we are going back to our summer meal program. Providing meals on, at one site over at the multipurpose room. And uh, we've made that announcement and we hope that we see plenty of people coming. Well, I would anticipate we'll have a greater number of participants than we have in years past. We have summer school starting for credit recovery and we are going with. The uh online company to help us with that, that will be a great. Uh, I guess pilot project to see how that might work with us if we wanted to. In the future, have an option of a very formalized online program. Uh, for students that want to be homeschooled in a sense, yet have some sort of. Connection with, with Granite Falls. For my administrative team this summer, there are two things I need for, from them. One, I need them to take time off. They need to recharge. Uh, their batteries after this time. But the second part is when they're not away recharging, I need them onsite. Because we're going to be preparing for next year. Uh, and it starts, you know, at their buildings, it's talking about our, our values and our philosophy as a whole district. Uh, we have plenty of work and our committee work includes the reopening committee. As well as that equity and discrimination committee. And uh, we're already starting to get people uh signed up for those. Um, our, our hope is to make the selections to those committees. June and get started in early July or get started in July. Basically, there are seventy-two days between June twenty-second and September second, when students return. And so those seventy-two days are going to be packed full of planning. And honestly, I, I said it yesterday, uh, you know, the state is giving this, these guidance. There are certain requirements, but we might as well anticipate a lot of changes that will. That will evolve as the summer occurs. One of the things we're committed to as the Snowhomish County Superintendent Group is. We want to be more similar in our, in our school districts than dissimilar. Because we don't want to have one school that's an outlier that's saying hundred percent in and, and another one that's. You know, doesn't want to do anything. I know it will, there'll be some variance, but uh. We don't want families to sort of cherry pick where they're going to go based on that. And so we really want to provide a similar experience. For our, for our students as they go on. Um, one last point, Sarah's still on the line. We want to wish Sarah the best. She's uh making her exit on to uh different things over in Snowhomish School District. And so we want to thank her for her work, the, uh, for her last three years and. Uh, she can top it off with great news tomorrow and uh with the safety net. So thank you, Sarah, for uh your work here in the Granite Falls School District. And finally to, to the board, uh, thanks for your patience. I know this was lengthy. Um, but there have been and there'll continue to be a lot going on. And honestly, I'm hoping that we can meet in person again uh very shortly. Because these Zoom meetings do not have the same. Same feel and I think there's some things that get lost in translation and. So I'm, I can't wait for us to get back together in person. So with that, that's my report and I'd love to answer any questions or comments.
That's a great report, Doctor, a lot of information there. I know I've got a couple, but um, I guess, can I um. Call on Dr. Panagis, I know you have some, some questions related to graduation as part of your board comments. So I'll let you lead off. Did you get your questions answered or do you have any follow up?
Oh, thank you. I, I got some, a lot of questions answered. And again, uh, you hear things here and there and you try to, to put things together, but uh. The fact that uh Josh and his cabinet have worked unbelievably hard to make all this work. Um, and I just don't, I, I think. To say my frustrations, which are legitimate, is based on not full knowledge. And I, it was a great report, Josh, and I respect you and I, I know how hard people are working to. To make this work out and I think it's just stressful all the way around. So my questions are answered and we'll continue, you know, working together. Uh, but uh, I think, as long as we have the approach that. How do we make it better? Or how do we improve? Uh, this was like almost an impossible situation. Uh, and I'd also like to thank uh Sarah for your, your hard work. And I know how hard that job is, uh, but uh. Best wishes and I, I hope it works out well for you in Snowhomish. And uh, I just thank you for, for all your hard work. It's, it's just such a, uh, special services and all of that is so difficult. It's all the people you have to deal with and so thanks for your, your time and hard work. Appreciate it and good luck.
Um, any questions related to the superintendent report?
Yeah, I was hoping to have more explanation or information about the online. Uh, services company he was talking about, he'd mentioned it before our last meeting. And I'd like to know what the name of the company is and he might, he probably said it before, but I'd like to have more information. Not necessarily right now, if you could just send us out an email maybe.
Yep, yep, be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else, Director Green?
No.
I'll, I'll jump in real quick. Um. You gave a, a lot of information there, um, Dr. M. The, the first one I had is I, I know that we're, we're going to open up a reopening committee. There's tons of, of things in the, the framework, the guidance that we got from OSPI that concerns me. Um, I guess the, the, the biggest two are um. The transportation and then the social distancing inside the building and what that looks like in a, in a small district like ours. So this reorg, I guess I, this is more, this is my question. So in this, in this reorganization group where we have, I mean, we have a responsibility. To be as responsive to the needs of the community and the, the parents that we serve, families that we serve in this district. Cause we possibly can within that framework. I mean, that's, that's got to be one. So whatever plan that we come up with inside of the wiggle room that we have, you know, we really need to keep that in mind. And it seems like there's almost like three sections of this that need to be maybe even evaluated separately, right? So there's this reorganization plan that just, okay, what does that look like? A and B shift, you know, online, you know, what does that look like? The transportation, which is one of my biggest concerns of, you know, what happens if a kid shows up? A kindergartner shows up at the bus stop and does have a face mask, right? I mean, are we, are we saying we're not going to transport that kid? That's crazy. No, we can't do that, you know? Are we going to buy a vat of face masks and just have them inside of the, the, the school bus? I mean, that, that to me, that piece alone needs to, I think, almost feel like that needs to be, and I'm, this is your call. But I'm just giving you my two cents, almost needs to be looked at specifically by, by, by its, its own group. Where they kind of tear that apart because that inside of itself to me is a, is a huge thing. And then the social distancing in the building, that almost to me kind of feels like that individual thing needs to be looked at by its own specific group. To kind of rip that apart and figure out what that looks like as, and then the reopening and all of that on, you know. A lot of parents, I mean, I, we have a lot of families that work, mom and dad both work, right? How, what does that look like? How do we make that work for families? Like, you know, I, I, I don't know. And I almost feel like you have one group that's trying to bite that whole apple. It's just going to be way too much. Um, my two cents and I'd love to hear your feedback on it. So, so that's my first point. Um, on, on the, on your point uh about um. Kind of everything that's going on in the world today, you know, uh, the Black Lives Matter movement, all, all of that. Your, your response to it, you know, I uh, and we've talked about this and I know that you're completely on board with this, Doctor M. You know, there's, there's a, there's a need for a, a school district like ours to. To die, to get some diversity because it's, it's what's going to have the best outcome for our students. And you know, in our, our district, you know, we, we can't wait for. For, for people of color, for, for teachers, for, for that diversity to come to us. We're going to have to kind of go out and get that, right? And I know that you and I, in our means, we've talked about that stuff and, and as I said, you're completely on board with that, but you know, and I. But that's, that's the direction that we're going to have to go and, and it has to be, you know, something that makes our community attractive. Um, also to someone that, you know, otherwise wouldn't, you know, move here. I, as, as a person of color, I moved to this community with some apprehension, right? I mean, that's, that's unfortunate reality of, of small rural towns that are predominantly the opposite thing that you are. Very predominantly, so we, 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 we just have to look at, at, at that and make sure that we're, we're striving and again, I, I know that you're doing that. Um, I, I don't want to overload you. I've said a lot there. What do you, you have any feedback on that?
Uh, immediately my, my feedback is um, you're absolutely right. I, I, I've had plenty of people and we still need to extend the invitation out to some patrons. To serve on both of these committees and from those committees, absolutely, there are going to have to be subcommittees. And from the subcommittees, one, there'll be subcommittees of each school. But then there'll be some thematic subcommittees to address exactly what you're talking about, transportation. You know, uh, cleaning, um, what does, what does social spacing uh or distancing look like? So I, I'm on board with you. This, uh, this is just that initial call for people who would be, be interested. But it'll have to be broken up into subgroups and the same with. The discussion of equity and discrimination. I mean, um, our HR director is, is sitting here with my cabinet right now and, you know. I, I could see a subcommittee of just that, looking at HR policies and practices and, and what can that look like in the future? And we have uh Mr. Davis still on the line. What does that look like at, for a principal out of school? So um, yeah, there'll be some general themes looked at, at the, at the committee level. But it'll be, there'll be a lot of digging at the subcommittee level.
And I, I, I hope that that um, as best as we can, that those committees involve input from the city as well. Because I mean, really it's kind of a, a holistic thing, right? I mean, we, it's not good enough for the school district to go and reach out and to, to do these things out really. To try to bring some diversity and I mean, we really need the city to be a, a, a compatriot in that as well.
And, and you know, and even goes down to the conversation of what you and I had the other day about. Um, about Friday, June eighth, that uh, you know, we've reached out to the city and I've already heard back from Brent. And yeah, what we're going to do is small, but we certainly want to uh have that commemoration and, and recognition. So I, I think the city will be on board.
Awesome. I don't want to hog board, uh, any other questions related to Dr. M's.
I just have a quick question. Um, we hadn't talked about this before, but I have had some questions. From parents, have we heard anything about fall sports or summer practices? Or any of those things, for instance, cross country? For instance, cross country normally begins practice, you know, over the summer and they're outside, so will they be able to run, you know, those kind of questions? I don't know that you necessarily have any answers, but have you heard anything about
I have.
sports?
That's a that's a conversation that comes up every Tuesday with the superintendent. And even though that's somewhat out of his purview, he he does address it. And sometimes he's even invited, or I guess on the E S D, we invited the executive director to come and address that. I know that in Skagit County and Wacom, I I believe they have taken the position and in talking with Joey today, I think they have as well, we have as well, that really until phase three comes, there's there's nothing. And and that comes risk management. They're they're weighing in, saying, you know what? Now, don't don't be doing anything. The National Federation of of High School Sports had come out and said, you know, you could do an open gym where every student goes and they have their own basketball. They can't be passing the ball back and forth or softball. You can pitch from a pitching machine, but you can't have a catcher. To me, that's, I don't know. Let's wait till we get to phase three where we can actually have some interactive participation. So to answer your your question, Director Beaches, it's something that's talked about. There are more questions and answers and but from a risk management and from indications we're hearing, there's they're saying that's going to be a phase three.
Do you have anything else, Director Beach?
No, I just, I I know a couple of folks have asked, you know, different questions about sports and and thought I'd check in.
Doctor, am I, I'm I guess I, because this is, this is essentially what happened with graduation, right? I mean, we're 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 doing the best that we can with the information that we have, which is the same as the other school districts. But, you know, I, as as I was talking to other families in other school districts and and, you know, they had, you know, very varying degrees of a graduation, right? You know, oh, we're sort of going to have it. We're going to sit, get six feet apart. And it seems like some school districts are just, and I'm I'm not saying this is wrong, right? They're just going, yeah, but this is what we're doing. As we're talking to risk management, you know, are they? I guess my I guess my frustration is, is that, you know, we we need to be as respo- as as safe as possible, but we also need to be as responsive to, again, to our families as we possibly can. And I just feel like we're over here trying to do everything the right way while other people are doing it wrong and then and we're where it's being seen as a disservice to our kids. And I'm just worried that I don't I'm I guess I'm I'm interested to understand, you know, what what coloring, not saying that we should, but but what gray area is there in a lot of this stuff, right? I I know a school district right now that is having practice right now. You know, they aren't, you know, but they're 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 having practice. Are the kids, you know, are they mining every social distancing thing? No, absolutely not. But and here we are, you know, saying that that we're not going to do that. Again, I'm not saying that we should buck the rules, but in areas where there's gray area, you know, let's side towards trying to accommodate, be as accommodating as we can. Do you get what I'm saying?
I do. And I I would say where we are in the gray would be we we look at what's essential versus non-essential. And so we look at, let's say, driver's education as that could be very essential to a family. And so we are going to gradually move away from Zoom to in-person instruction. And certainly when it comes to their driving, they are they're doing that. When it comes to sports, you know, I I I'm gonna, I'm just gonna blame the last two weeks that that that's not, that's not high on my list as we're just, you know, just trying to get through the school year, but it, I know it's a it's a recurring topic and and, you know, I I know that both Evan and Joey are on the phone all the time with their cohorts, talking about what's going on and what's not. So all I can do is, I guess, keep you apprised with what other districts are doing and see how that might evolve.
Well, I mean, there's 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 a certain population of our kids who I've said it before, I've said it again, I was I was a classic C student in high school. And the only reason I was, and the reason I was a C student and not a D student is you had to have a C to play football. We, there is the argument that I've had parents make to me is is they need athletics to keep their kids tied to the educational environment. That's essential. I mean, that's 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 something. And then you also have the parents who say, listen, my kid, you know, he, we need to get some form of scholarship for my kid to be able to afford college. If he's not practicing, if he's not playing, then he's not getting that. Now, obviously, you know, getting scholarship is hard and and all those things, but putting that stuff aside, I mean, that's that that's a legitimate concern. And again, I'm not, I'm not protesting that we should go against the guidance of the Department of Health or the State of Washington. My point is, is that there seems to be other districts that are coloring a little outside the lines, or maybe there's some gray area here. And maybe there's some gray area that we can find to be able to, again, address what some parents would be considering essential, which is athletics. And I don't want to harp on that, but that's my feeling. Any other questions related to the superintendent report?
I had a couple of comments I wanted to make. That's all right.
Yeah.
Yeah. First off, I want to say thank you for that report. I I feel like the open communication has been one of your highest attributes, like the most valued attribute. I've I've heard espoused in the community and especially from the board. So I appreciate that. Like Carl, I appreciate your candor, but I have a lot of questions. And I'm not going to, you know, divulge down the what if, what if, what if. But my only request that is as we go forward, I know I'll be emailing you questions I have. And as we go forward, if you just address those as you get them, that'd be wonderful. Because, you know, like Carl, I want to ask, like, what if kids show up with a mask and they don't get to ride the bus? Like, what's the plan? So I just, I just really want to commend you on your communication and just oh, yeah, I really appreciate it and hope it keeps coming.
That's a just thought something. How much involvement do you want the board or and if the answer is none, that's fine. But on these, on this reopening, reorganize, reopening committees, do you want board involvement like on?
I'm glad you brought that up. I would like board participation on both, both of those committees and then whatever subcommittee. So again, there'll be more coming out next week, but I I'll I'll email you and and sort of get a gauge for each one individually.
Is it okay, board, if you're interested in being a part of that? Now, we have to be careful because if we have three of us in the same room and we're talking about district stuff, that's a quorum. So then it's a public meeting and and we have to take meeting notes and we have to advertise it and all of those things. So I would say at all costs, we want to try to keep it to two or less. But if you're interested in being a part of that, then why don't you email me and C C. Dr. Middleton and and just say, hey, I'm raising my hand. If that, does that work for everybody? I see heads nodding. Okay.
Yep. Well, I think we can also be part of subcommittees if, I mean, there's, we like Josh, Dr. M said, there can be a lot of committees. We could all be a part of if we wanted. Just gotta be careful of not being in the same room together.
Yeah. Agreed. Any other questions, points? Superintendent report. Before I go, also, I know you're you're muted, Dr. Middleton, but thank you so much. I'd be remiss if I didn't tell you. Thank you. I appreciate all of your time and dedication to our district. I do, from the bottom of my heart, wish and hope nothing for the best of you and Snohomish and wherever your travels take you. You've been a, you've you've been a great asset to us and I appreciate the the three years that you've given us. I really do.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to be selfish and say, I hope it doesn't go well and you have to come back and work with us again. Just joking, you're gonna do awesome. Good luck. Thank you.
And she's muted again, so she can't, she she can't retort.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna miss you.
All right. So we'll move on to item three, board report. Do we want to start with community?
I feel like our entire meeting again has been the community report. So I think I've, I think I've said enough, but thank you for I have nothing to add at this time.
Thank you, Director Beach. Let's report. Is there anything big, Dr. P?
Not at this time.
W I A?
Although we've Yes, yes, this should be interesting after our recent discussion there. So Joey Johnson sent me this district news notes for District One. It says, the biggest challenge, we will now be required to pay official fees upfront at the beginning of the season. So I want to know, how are we going to pay for fees if we're not even going to be playing?
That's a very good question, Dr. I know we're catching off guard, Dr. M, but do you have any feedback on that? And if not, you can, we can email or?
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to look at that yet.
Yeah, I just don't think it's right to have to pay fees and then we don't know what's games are going to get played and what games are not going to get played. I think that's not very fair.
We think about spring and we started soccer, softball and baseball, but never one game. What if we played, paid all those official fees?
Yeah. Anyway, something needs to be looked into.
If you don't mind, Dr. M, would it be okay with you, Dave, if if he responded to that as part of the superintendent report next week? Or in two weeks, I guess?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. Does that work for you, Dr. M?
That's fine.
Okay. All right. So moving on, unfinished business, we have none. New business five A resolution nineteen twenty oh seven, general fund budget extension. Discussion, any discussion? Hearing none, is someone prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We accept resolution nineteen twenty dash oh seven, general fund budget extension.
Which has been made by Director Butler to accept resolution number nineteen twenty oh seven, budget extension. Is there a second?
I second.
Which is main seconded by Director Panakis. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Right, five B, resolution nineteen twenty oh eight, appointment of designated person under the Federal Asbestos Hazard Emergency Response Act of nineteen eighty six. Discussion. Who's that person? Is that you, Dr. M?
It'll be
Dion.
Yeah. Okay.
This is, where did this come from? I've never seen this one before. I don't remember seeing this in the past. Where's this from?
This is actually around, I mean, most school districts have this. I just think this might have been an omission and so we're getting caught up on that.
Okay. Do we, do we, have we tested hot areas for potential asbestos? Do we have a a report on that? Just out of curiosity.
Let me turn my head to Mr. Freeman. He is shaking his head, yes.
Okay.
We have. And and we could actually get some information out to everyone if interested.
Sure, since none of us even knew that this appointment needed to occur until today. Go ahead and send that out. I did read it, though. That's how I knew it was, um, his name was in there. I was like, oh, I've never seen this before. Okay.
All right. Um, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution nineteen twenty dash oh eight, appointment of designated person under the Federal Asbestos Hazard Emergency Response Act of nineteen eighty six.
Didn't want to stop you, but I was like, you don't have to read the whole thing.
I was like, really? This thing is long.
I'll second that.
Most of the main seconded, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passing unanimous. All right, I'm five C, first and second reading to amend policy thirty two oh seven, prohibition of harassment, intimidation or bullying. Discussion.
Yeah, I had context to that first.
Please.
So this was a a policy and remember last fall, we worked on the discipline policies that needed to be updated by a certain day. These were actually be included in that same timeframe. And so we're we're behind on that and better late than never. So we're, that's why we're asking for the first and second reading, just to be in compliance.
I had, if if it's okay for me to jump in, I had a couple of questions. So prevent, prevention, under prevention says, in its efforts to train students, the district will seek partnerships with family, law enforcement and other community agencies. So under that prevention tab, is there something that we're not doing that you would do? Or do you feel that we're already meeting that effort, Dr.?
Well, we we've done some of that already. We've, Snohomish County had a and the district just ended a partnership on some behavior intervention type techniques. So those partnerships already exist. So I I think we're already doing that as well.
Okay. And this is a last change, right? This is okay, I'm just making sure. So they, under interventions, it says interventions will range from counseling, correcting behavior and discipline to law enforcement referrals. Again, is there something new under that intervention that we aren't doing currently?
No, I I believe we're using all of that.
Okay. I guess the 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 thing that raised an eyebrow was the changes under students with individual education plans for section five oh fours. So previously it said, if if a student with a five oh four had, was the target of harassment, intimidation or bullying, then we would convene a group to make sure that they're still getting free, appropriate public education. Now we're saying if they're the aggressor or the target, that the student is not, and we'll make a determination relative to F A P as a result of harassment or bullying and and if we need deem additional supports or services as deemed necessary, such as counseling, monitoring and reevaluation or revision of the student's I E P or section five oh four plan. That seems significant to me. Is that not, is that significant?
You know, I I I think it's significant that it's in the the policy now, but it's actually a practice that should have all always been occurring. And I think now it ensures that it does because if we do have an aggressor and it's due to whatever their five oh four plan is for, it's very appropriate for that group to get together and review and and now maybe look at the conditions that the student is, you know, environment they're learning in to make make some adjustment. I might ask Sarah if that's okay with you, Carl, to maybe enhance a little bit.
Yep, please.
Um, yes, I think Middleton's correct that this should have been in the policy all along. The old policies, which said, we'll work with kids with disabilities when they're being targets, was characterized by a judge in a fairly recent legal finding as teaching people to be better victims, that really our targets of intervention should be the bullies and teaching them better behavior and not to bully, doing whatever services we need to to get to the underlying issues that are leading them to treat other children that way. So it's just incorporating into the board policy, best practice, which is to yes, work with kids who are being bullied to give them some skills, but also our target should always be changing the behavior of the bully, not just changing the behavior of the victim of the bullying. So that's where that's coming from.
Is that something new, Dr. Middleton? Again, is it something that we aren't doing currently with this policy?
I believe we are doing it currently. I, it isn't in our board policy yet, but I believe that as a district, we are definitely addressing bullying as a behavior for which we write I E P goals. When we know that the student who is participating in the bully or perpetrating the bullying is is targeting other children, then we address it as a special ed need of the bully. is, is targeting other children, then we address it as a special ed need of the bully. So that's, that is happening. It just isn't in our policy yet, but it is best practice in the field.
And last question, compliance officer says district, uh, who's our compliance officer for this, Dr. M? Is it Sarah? Okay. So I guess moving forward, the participate in at least one mandatory training opportunity offered by O S P I?
That's correct. I go to an annual training.
Okay.
And in addition to that, I also have gone to other trainings, because I think we have to take very, very seriously. So Gail will be going to the annual O S P I H I B harassment, intimidation and bullying training. And also I would recommend there's some anti, there's discriminatory harassment training, which is similar, but a little different, because that's bullying based on a protected class. I'd recommend to go to both. I'm putting together a binder for her and I'll make sure that information is in there.
Okay. So again, not something that we aren't already, I'm, I'm just trying to identify things that are going to be a, a separation from the way that we're currently handling or potential cost impacts or that. And, and so far I'm not hearing really anything else. In this now. And, and I, I don't have, it's, it's challenging even for me to have a, to, to figure out where from a policy standpoint. And that's a, if we can get like a complete PDF of all of our current policies, that would be great. It's kind of updated or maybe like an online drive. Because I'm, as I'm looking at these cross-reference policies, I couldn't determine if all of those policies are policies that we have now.
We're all online, right? We, we do have all the policies on the website.
Okay. Maybe I, I tried to go through sometimes with the way dropdowns and stuff work, maybe it's just me, but I, I don't have the best of luck on a website looking at policies.
I can't, I struggle to find the cross-reference too. Maybe as we're going through, when we update a policy, we can add those links in so that you can link from one to the next without having to exit back to the webpage to come back in for it. Because I, I've had this, a similar experience with the dropdowns.
Thanks, Director Beach, because I was, I was worried it was just me. It's, it's hard to navigate and it's, it, you're, I'm just like, all right, well, hopefully, hopefully they're all there. But do we feel confident that we have all of those, that we've adopted all of those cross-reference policies?
Have they also been updated with the newest supporting links or supporting information?
And this is a, well, it is a first and second reading. I was gonna say we could always.
So those links, I always check to make sure that we, if we don't have a policy adopted, I pull it off of the cross-reference check.
I don't know if you heard that from Melanie, but
I did, but actually, as I'm looking at this now, and I thought that maybe I highlighted this, but I guess I didn't, because right under the cross-reference policy, it says highlighted references we do not currently have adopted. And twenty one sixty one and thirty two eleven are highlighted.
I guess those
That might be on the marked up version.
So when I include the second reading where I remove that.
Okay. So when, i- if we had a clean second reading, that would be removed, so.
Okay, so that, I'm, I'm assuming then that, because we're, we're doing this all at the same time, twenty one sixty one, thirty two eleven, as well as that line that says highlight references we do not currently have adopted will be taken out?
Correct, yes.
It looked like Sarah had a comment on those policies. Did you have a comment, Sarah? Oh, okay. She's muted, but I saw her. I thought I saw your hand raised. Okay.
Okay. Oh, wait, do, do you have your hand raised? I was, I looked away.
We don't know.
This is, this is another moment of when I'll be happy.
Sorry, I, I'm in a west-facing window and it's really bright even with the shade. So periodically I just can't take the glare, so not facing my hand, that was blocking the glare, sorry.
Any other questions? We're in discussion for second reading of thirty two oh seven. We don't, if someone's prepared to make a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion. We accept the first and second reading to amend policy thirty two oh seven prohibition of harassment, intimidation or bullying.
Motion's been made to accept the first and second reading of to amend policy thirty two oh seven. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been seconded by Director Beach. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. All right, on to the consent agenda, and I know there are some additions. Looked like there was a travel addition and pulling that up right now.
I had a quick question about the travel request. It doesn't say where, like, why they're going. Just said that they're going to a training in support of the district strategic goals.
I'll pick them. Oh, it's okay, that's right. It's, it's related to poverty and helping students within poverty conditions.
I just happened to notice that the, the title of what they were doing was actually blank. Yeah, I was wondering. Approving a boondoggle to Texas, it looks like.
And so that is, that isn't gonna be canceled? That is going on, then?
That is going on, yep. We, we did get that confirmed.
Okay. If there was a, you know how WASTA is looking at doing a virtual? I was wondering if they were gonna do virtual, but it is just onsite.
Yes.
Any other additions? I don't think there was. I got two emails. No, okay. So is there a motion to accept the consent agenda with the additions?
I'll motion for the agenda with the additions.
Motion's been made by Director Green to accept the consent agenda with the additions. And I will second that, because I don't think I have motions or seconded anything today. So, favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, okay. All right, long meeting. I will call the regular board being closed at seven forty four. We're all done.
We haven't had a marathon like that in a while.
At least we're all at home.
Yes, that's true. All right, I'm gonna go see if the family left me any pizza.
All right, thank you.
Bye, guys.
It's, I know it was close, but this would be the greatest thing to ever happen. Does that mean I don't have to slowly sign my name forty times on some of these statements? End of the year, end of
I don't think we do, but I went in to see Melanie for a printout and, and, or no, something else. And I ended up having to sign my time sheet from February, March, April, May. Well, you know.
Once at the end of the board meeting.
Yeah, when she, uh, when she sees you, she's gonna get your signature on everything she needs your signature on. So bring a pen. We'll see ya. Bye.